All right, board members, we have a quorum, so let's get started. I'll give you two minutes.
I guess it's posted, right?
Oh, no, I was giving everybody two minutes so I could get ready.
All right, everyone, we can get started with this budget work session. For those of you who are following all of the -- I'm just trying to get my thing online, so for all of you who are following us, we have this under work session for today online, and we will begin with a brief overview from Ms. Michael.
Good evening. Thank you so much. The agenda for this evening is first to review the actions that the county did at pre-markup and how they impact our budget deficit. Then we'll provide an enrollment update from spring enrollment projections and look at the gap. And then the last part of this evening's work session will really be to look at how we're going to begin closing the gap. And we'll start that discussion this evening with the superintendent's list of potential reductions. After that discussion, we'll go over the outstanding budget questions and review the timeline for our remaining budget work sessions, public hearings, and board meetings prior to your adoption of the budget on May 25.
Can you just scroll two pages?
Click down twice.
It won't click. Just scroll. Click.
One more.
Okay. So the Board of Supervisors held their pre-budget markup last Friday, and since then, they did have their budget markup on Tuesday. And as part of that, they're recommending an additional 1.7 million for FCPS. That results in an operating fund transfer increase in total of 53.4 million, or 2.79 percent over our FY '17 approved operating transfer. So when we look at the county's pre-markup and markup, they had a balance of 3.68 million, and that included the funding that was available from their advertised budget, as well as some additional revenue from the state and other sources. So their markup methodology was to continue the approach of allocating that revenue proportionately to county and schools. So as a result of that, our total funding from the county does remain at 52.8 percent of the county's available revenue, which was consistent with their advertised budget, and is slightly higher than the percentage in the FY '17 approved budget. So the county did acknowledge, as part of the markup package, that even with the additional funding for schools, an order for FCPS to balance the budget will likely have to take many of the same actions that the county took on their side this year, including deferring or not funding important priorities and instituting reductions. In addition to that statement, their budget guidance talked about the approach that was taken in the development of the FY '18 budget, which was to focus on the needs of the county and schools through continued collaboration between the two boards, and to provide equitable increases consistent with the available resources, and that this approach should be continued for the FY '19 budget. On the next slide, we have the updates from our spring enrollment projections. As we do every spring, we recalculated our enrollment projections for every single school and program across the system, and that does result in an additional 233 students, as well as changes to our student demographics. And as a result of those changes, after we calculated the staffing at every single individual school and program level, our expenditures will increase by 2.7 million. So that is in addition to the 10 million that was in the advertised budget. So in total, the cost of enrollment growth and student demographic changes in FY '18 is 12.7 million. So if we move to Slide 5, this is the chart that we've been using at each work session, so we'll continue to walk through the chart as we have each time. It starts at the top line with our FY '18 advertised transfer request from the county, which was an increase of $112.5 million. The transfer increase that was included in the county executive's advertised budget was 51.7, so that had left us with a gap of 60.9 million. Based on the final actions from the state budget that provided additional funding of 4.1, which reduced that gap down to 56.7 million. As part of our FY '17 third quarter budget review, we set aside additional funding for our FY '18 budgeted beginning balance of 6.5 million, and we recognize recurring savings in our health expenditures of 1.8. So this reduced the gap to 48.7 million. Then with the additional increase in funding from the county of 1.7, that leaves us with a gap of 46.7 million to close for FY '18. So if we move to the next page, Slide 6, and start with that gap of 46.7 million, the first thing we need to do is add that increased cost of enrollment growth and student demographic changes. So that's an increase in our costs of 2.7 million. Then throughout this budget process, we've been talking about planning for changing how we provide the instruction as part of our English for Speakers of Other Languages transitional high school program. So changing how we provide that staffing allocation saves 1.4 million. And then as we've notified the board, the assessment tool, or the universal screener, by rolling out only the diagnostic component next year, that will save us $1 million. So all of those together then change that gap to $47 million. So as we've been working through this budget process, if we look at the items where the school board has given us direction to plan for, the first item is a class size increase of a half, based on the new enrollment projections for spring, and also based on the fact that we're looking at changing the elementary class size floor from 17 to 18 by only one, the calculation for class size savings of a 0.5 increase is 14.7 million. Then the savings from increasing that elementary class size formula floor by one student saves $1 million. If we delay the implementation of the non-teacher scales, as was presented to the board at the compensation study discussion at last Thursday's work session, that saves us $5 million. So that means we'll move forward, or not included in this, are the teacher salary scale, the classroom instruction scale, which is instructional assistance, PHTAs and PHAs, as well as, as we presented last Thursday, the implementation of the new Schedule H for the unified scale, which was food service workers and bus drivers. And then now, on the last line, we also have parent liaisons. So to provide benefits for parent liaisons who are working 30 or more hours a week, as per that budget discussion, and to put them on a system where they'll receive step, increases cost by .4 million. So if we take all of those items where we were given direction to plan into consideration, that would reduce that gap from 47 million to 26.7 million. So the next thing we'd like to do on Slide 7 is begin this discussion again this evening about how we'll address this gap of 26.7 million. And we'd like to start by looking at the superintendent's list of potential reductions in fees, and we'd like to focus on those that we haven't discussed yet. Again, tonight, we're not looking for the board to make a final decision, but to provide us guidance so we can plan. This guidance is important to our employees, as they're concerned about some of the items on this list, as well as our community, and it will help us plan for an effective implementation. So tonight, posted in a separate document that we'll bring up, is that list of the superintendent's proposed reductions. And to that list, since we've last met, we've made some updates. So I'll wait for that to come up. Okay, so on this list, we've shaded the items that we have already included in the presentation that I just went through. So if we've included the item to help us reduce that budgetary gap down to the 26 million, they're shaded in gray. So the first gray shade that you'll see here is the English for Speakers of Other Languages transitional program. And what we've done, in addition to shading it in gray, is we've included in the far-right column the word "included," so you know we included that item in helping us get to this gap of 26 million dollars. In addition, for the items where we've updated the cost estimate based on spring enrollment projections, as you can see with the elementary class size, we've also indicated "updated," and you'll also see there that it's marked "included," again, because we've included that in how we're addressing the gap. So the other item that we just have adjusted at the very top of the page are departmental reductions. Originally, when we had presented this list, we had departmental reductions of $2 million, and we have been working identifying reductions of $3 million. And our hope is to be able to share those reductions at Monday's work session, after we continue to work with the departments on finalizing those exact impacts and positions that will be included. So at this point, we'd like to start our discussion of the remaining items on the sheet that we haven't previously addressed. So I believe when we look down this page, we've already begun the planning for the department and the travel reductions, so the next item that comes up is athletic fees.
Does anyone have any questions, Dr. Locker? Do you want to have anything to say at this point?
No, thank you, Ms. Darnett-Kofax. Again, as we reiterate what Ms. Michael shared, you know, our hope is to get some guidance from the school board on these items that we haven't discussed yet, and we're here to provide any information and answer as many questions as we can moving forward.
All right, thank you. Board members, does anyone want to begin the discussion? Ms. Schultz?
So I sent in a question late last night because we didn't get a chance to see this on Monday. Can you, Ms. Michael, explain how from the end of February until now, a half-student increase in class size went from saving $11 million to roughly 14 and a half, or what, 14.2, 14.7? So that's a 20, over a 25 percent balloon in the supposed savings. And with the addition of 2,152 students, I'm not quite sure how to square that circle.
Sure, thank you so much for the question. So when we started working on the potential list of reductions last year, we had included a class size increase of one. And you're absolutely correct, at a previous work session, when asked the question about how much did I think we could save if we did it by a half, I gave the estimate that you stated, which was approximately $11 million. So this 14.7 million is higher, exactly as you have said. So first, that was an estimate, and when we gave that estimate, it's always hard to determine the actual impact at every school unless we calculate it. But when we look at that estimate, we always have to look at our reductions in terms of how they impact each other, and that reduction was calculated, that class size increase of one, with the change in the elementary class size staffing formula floor of two, right? So when we changed the formula calculation for the floor to an increase of only one, and then when we added all of the new students that came from the spring enrollment projections, and when we actually calculated that class size increase of a half at every single individual school, including the impact not only to teachers, but every other position that's impacted by our class size formula, so for example, clerical or custodial or any other position that's impacted by the number of teachers, when we add up those adjustments at every single school, we get to that total savings of 14.7.
And I appreciate that, and that's a lot of language, but there's no assumptions that are given to the board to back that up. Like, we're not able to see how that's derived. So I'm in a position where, you know, basically, we're getting a May. So May, June, July, August, in about 100 days, I'm being told that 2,152 students are going to materialize. I don't know where. I don't know how that impacts class size. I'm being told it is. I'm being told that there's a material savings that's changed in 45 days by over 25 percent, but it's, I feel like we have to see, we have to understand as a board, the assumptions, not just be told. I mean, you know, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, you know, we got ourselves into this position on Monday night because we were supposed to have a discussion on Monday night, and now we're just having it, and we have a lot of other things going on. But I just think that it's incumbent upon staff to provide the backup of the assumptions, just like when we ask a budget question, if you fund a -- I mean, that is a substantial change. I mean, that's millions of dollars, and also thousands of children that are about to materialize, that are tied to not only staffing formula decisions, which really should be a part of this discussion as well, but also class size discussions, and which schools specifically are impacted. And, you know, I mean, and you know, and Mr. Plattenberg's not here. I mean, you know, I mean, I've taken the time in the past to ask the questions of where we have 17 or fewer students, and where that's actually going to impact, and it's an infinitesimal number of classrooms compared to our overall classrooms. So I'm just struggling, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, that this is an assumption change that's pretty substantial. I mean, when you look at, when you look at the, and I can't see the bottom, but we were, we thought on Monday, we were about $4.7 million less than we are, and now the budget gap's increased again, but yet we've materialized savings here. And so when there's some significant shifts like this, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, it makes it difficult to say that we're going to force hands tonight, because I think that a lot of us have been working behind the scenes on assumptions that we only were handed 45 days ago.
Well, one thing before you say, Ms. Michael, these documents were posted last weekend. We didn't get to them, but all of this was there for over a week now. So I know that, you know, if, and I know how busy everyone has been, but, Ms. Michael, go ahead. I just wanted to point that out.
No, thank you. There wasn't a change in our assumptions. So previously, at a work session, I was asked to just provide an estimate, a guestimate, as I would call it, of how much we would save. And you're right, at that point, I absolutely provided an estimate. But for this 14.7, we literally took, for example, our -- But for this 14.7, we literally took, for example, our elementary class size formula, which is one teacher for every 26.75 students, and we said, when we increase that formula to 27.25, right, what will the savings be? How many fewer teachers and other positions will be generated?
You know full well what my, what my problem is with that, is that that is a district-wide application, and that's not an on-the-ground application. That doesn't talk about a particular, where the children are arriving in a particular school. And we all know that children don't arrive in 26.2 or whatever packets. I mean, I wish they did. I wish we could prescribe that they did, but they don't.
Correct.
And it's not that it was a guesstimate. 22.8 was there as the staffing estimate for going up one. So it was reasonable when you said, it wasn't a guess. That was a pretty reasonable number to say at 11. And to say that a half now eats up, you know, another 25% is part of the struggle here. And, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, I didn't see this until Monday. I don't know if this particular document was on this weekend. I don't think it was. I think that this was loaded on Monday.
We were able to post everything last Friday. We had everything done prior to going to the county for budget pre-markup, and we stayed at the county afterwards, and thankfully, the school board office was very gracious and stayed to post it. So we were able to get everything posted.
And as everybody's aware, you know, there's stuff happening, you know, behind the scenes that, you know, preclude us from, I mean, we couldn't even get to this on Monday. I'll let others ask questions. That's a, that was a pretty significant question, because that, to me, that's a pretty significant change, when you're, when you're swinging almost $4 million.
Ms. Darnett-Kofax, if I might, just to add to the conversation a little bit, for my own clarification, I believe the calculation is done school by schoolable. So the reason that we keep, continue to update this is because enrollment fluctuates. A lot of these students have already, already come in, and so sometimes that fluctuation can be subtle. I'll just try to throw out an example. So if you're at a particular school and you have four kindergarten classes of 27, and our cap is 28, right? And in the, in the new projection that we do each spring, you see that you're going to have five more kindergarteners, and that's going to put them over that cap. So then you're calculating in for that school, another, another teacher and another IA. Whereas in another school, the example might be there's 23 kids in each kindergarten class, and you calculate two more kids show up. Well, that's not, they're not going to gain from that. And so when you do those applications in the spring to update the enrollment, it is school by school, which is why, which is what gets you to that.
That's actually extremely helpful, Dr. Lockard, and that's, I think that was where my question started, which is if we know where 2,152 students are going to be, I think that that should be an appendix, and you should tell us. I think we should be able to see where these students are coming, because that's really the, if you will, the homework. And that's, that's the showing your work, you know, in education vernacular, to the roll-up. This is the executive summary, but the how did you get there? Because I don't know. Okay? Thank you.
All right, my colleagues, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to encourage everybody to make comments, ask questions about any of this information. Again, we were supposed to go over this on Monday. We weren't, we were not able due to our schedule. And so, questions? And then, because we need some of these, and again, this isn't, this isn't wedding you to this, it's just helping Dr. Lockard for, you know, as he goes and moves along the budget, to see where there is any consensus on either not moving forward on this any longer or not. But that may come out as part of our discussion. But Ms. Evans, a quick reminder, we have until 6:00. Is that what we decided here?
If we're going to get to the forum, yes, we have until 6:00.
Okay. So we'll just be mindful of that, and I have Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First of all, starting with department reductions. $3 million, it used to be $2 million, and it went up to $3 million. I understand why. And I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, for the first time I see April 21, central cleaning, is that correct? As a part of this question of that $3 million, central administration reduction?
Yes, as part of the department reduction, central cleaning has always been part of that. So it was previously, but it does continue to be as well.
Okay, so April 21, what I'm trying to say is April 21 and central cleaning are the two new items that are additional, just making a boil cuts from central administration.
Correct.
But could I find out what right up to 21 and central cleaning would mean? And also whether you have communicated with groups of employees who may be potentially impacted by this? And whether, when you say central cleaning, you mean all the central administrative offices or just some, and some not? And especially how the current employees would be impacted by this?
So we're still working through the department reductions. Our goal is to have them completed and have a plan so we can talk to employees prior to us sharing them with the board at Monday's work session. So we're still working through those, and we'll bring all of those details to you.
And for central reduction, are you also including school board office for this reduction?
Yes, we are.
Same thing that goes with the travel restriction that affects school board office as well?
Yes, our calculation included all central functions.
Including school board members?
That is correct.
Okay. And the next question that I have is with ESOL Transitional Program. I've seen the same number for many months, but I do have still the same concerns about using hourly versus contracted, you know, teachers to teach. So I would like to have some more clarification, whether we are still sticking with hourly rate teachers versus where, whether we are going to be able to modify that to use contracted employees to teach. I mean, you can provide the response in writing. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to write away, right here. And for all the items, as far as I am concerned, for abandoned strings, then I am not going to be supporting a cutting and abandoned strings program. I don't know where my colleagues are, if there are enough board members who are willing to support removing this from the list. I would like to hear from my colleagues on that.
That is an item where we really would like to hear from the board tonight. We've heard that we have teachers in those positions that are very anxious in terms of do they need to be looking for other employment, because they are worried about not having a position. So if the board could provide guidance there, I think that would be very helpful.
So I'm going to, I'm going to put it on table that I would support removing this from the list for consideration.
Mr. Moon, I would be happy to second that motion. As somebody who took strings in elementary school, probably one of the early years since I was in, graduated in '79 from Fairfax County, I would support removing it from the list. Do you have more to offer, or should I continue on?
I think I'm done for the time being.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. And first, I want to thank you for sharpening your pencil and finding more places that we can find efficiencies. I appreciate that. I have some questions, though, about whether or not we can look at some other things. In particular, I see areas where we have grown over time, and in that 3 million where the central office cuts, are you anticipating cuts to things like the hearings office or to non-professional services contracts that have grown over the past several years? Because that would be one question I have, or actually two in those two areas, as well as a question about some transportation costs, too. So you want to answer those two first?
Sure. So when we were working with all...
I'll start, just by sharing with you that I did charge each department in taking that deeper dive. And so all of the, all of the central areas, our assistant superintendents have been working to identify. And so some of those areas that you spoke to have been impacted. We haven't finalized that yet, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. This is the amount that I've tasked as we look at our budget work here. As Ms. Michael said earlier, our goal is to bring that to you Monday with a little more specificity around it, including whether it's department budget components or, and positions that are associated with that. So I'm not prepared today to say these are the exact positions and, but all of the departments we've looked at. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Ms. Michael?
Just for clarity, for my school board colleagues, because when you said Monday, I was like, my head went back to last Monday when we were supposed to be doing this. But we're doing another budget work session on May 1st, Monday. So you all, we know that. And if there's reference to Monday's work session, that's what we're talking about, the upcoming May 1st work session. All right, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, are you?
I'm not done, but I know that Mr. Paris looks like he has something to say, and I never want to interrupt him, so please go ahead.
Well, thank you. Initially, Dr. Lockard had asked us to look at your request around department reductions at the 1.2, 3, and 5% levels. And so when this initiative was expanded, since the hearing office does fall under my supervision, that is one of the pieces that we've offered cuts in the next round, and we'll provide some more specificity around that when we go forward.
So is there a possibility that it will be greater than the 3 million that's on the table now?
What was originally tasked of us was 1.2 million to move to the 3, or 1.2% to move to the 3%. That was included from the beginning in that 3% target.
Oh, okay, because this is .99%, right?
This is going to be a little bit above 1.2%, but we went from identifying, trying to identify somewhere around 2 million, and now we're trying to identify 3 million. So we've actually increased the departmental reductions by 50%.
So it's, so it's like 1.2% is what you're saying, right?
I believe it's slightly greater than 1.2%. I don't have the exact percentage, but...
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful. Because one of the questions I have is, over time, there are certain budgets that have grown, and if we can look at them and perhaps realize some additional efficiencies, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm looking at our transportation, and that we've got over 10 million for buses, but last year, we only actually used about 8.8 million. And so we've got, I can give you the exact numbers on that, but we've got, let's see, last year, we spent $7,588,077, and we have on the table $10,850,050. So if we could find some synergies there, I think it would be very helpful, because if we can slow the replacement rate, I know it's painful, because we have, just last year, kind of accelerated and started going again with investments, but given this year's budget situation, I don't know if there's a possibility to slow that a bit. And then on textbooks, I have a question. Last year, over a million dollars were, actually, $3,128,753 was traded out of the textbook line items for different schools. And so if we could maybe bring some of that back, that would be helpful.
So actually, a little further down on this list, you'll see instructional materials for a savings of $2.4 million. We did try to recapture as much of that as we felt we could without hurting our schools.
Fantastic, that's great. And then...
If I may go back to the buses, we did answer a budget question specifically on our budget for next year and our expenditures. It was budget question response number 41.
No, I read it.
Okay. All of that funding is committed through lease payments, right? So we don't have the possibility for savings based on the buses that were already purchased or ordered. So we won't have the opportunity to reduce our expenditures for buses for FY '18.
But I thought those were all FY, new leases. There was a portion that were all to be new leases, and so I don't know how we committed them if we don't have the money in pocket yet.
So the way our lease contract works that we share with the county, our payment terms, is they start a year after we receive the buses. So the payments start in FY '18 for buses that we've actually already received, the buses we already have. So in that one case, there's not the possibility for savings in FY '18.
Okay. And similarly, for the non-bus vehicles, there's a million dollars there, and so if we could realize some out of that?
And we'll absolutely look at that. We can get back to you on Monday.
Okay, excellent. And then last, I had a question about the alternative high school staffing, because that area has grown in per pupil cost, and I know that you're in the process of redesigning the alternative high school. Is there any ability, do we have any flexibility of trying to accelerate that redesign so that we can realize some of those savings earlier than a year out?
So I think we're looking at two different things. Included in the budget that we're working on is a redesign of the ESOL Transitional High School program. But I think when you're looking at the growth in terms of our alternative programs in the budget book, you're looking at the cost of services for alternative programs in our cost per pupil.
Right.
And those programs include some of our other service delivery, whether it's our programs at courthouses, our ALCs. I mean, certainly, we can talk to Dr. Lipp, who I don't see here right now, but we can ask of Monday if she could provide us with some additional information on those programs. In part, when we look at the cost increase for next year, it's being impacted by our projection for the number of students, right? So when we look at for FY '17, our projection for the number of students was a little bit higher than the actual students. So we've adjusted that projection, but many of those staffing components are fixed, where we have a set number of people, whether it's at Boys' Probation House or the jail or other components. But I'd be certainly happy to ask Dr. Lipp to address that at Monday's work session.
That would be very helpful, because that tends to be one of our faster-growing areas of the budget, and when we look to the potential of cutting signature programs, I think it's important to make sure that we are equitable across different areas. So I would appreciate that very much. And just finally, there are a number of trades that go on for staffing trades, teachers for, at different high schools. For example, there were five teachers that were traded out at TJ for administrative staff last year. And so is there an opportunity to look at how our trades are going? And if we're trading out teachers, staff, it seems to me that that's an area where we have an opportunity to realize some savings there as well?
Yes, we do need to look at trades. We need to look at that moving forward as well.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. First of all, I agree with Mr. Moon. I do not support taking the money out of the abandoned strings program. That is one of the signature programs in Fairfax County that's been in place 30, 40 years. And from the other issue that we, we also know that in many schools, those programs are continuing to be used to not only instruct our students, but also to provide planning time and be able to work their master schedule. I'm also finding in my neatest schools, those are the schools that care the most about being able to keep the arts together, because those are families, children, who could not afford arts opportunities outside the school. So yes, I would like to see that one removed. I have a larger question. The first document we saw showed a projected deficit. I'm trying to figure out, this last document that we have on the screen is, when you add all those potential reductions, it's 37.3 million. And then in the previous document that we looked at, in other words, right, in other words, out of this 37-point sum, is it that the bottom lines, we're trying to get to 27, what is, what is the delta here? I know if I had a minute, I could do that, but you already know.
Sure. So after the items, if we exclude... So after the items, if we exclude the items that are shaded in gray.
Right.
From the other items on this list.
Right.
From other items that the board identifies, or from adjustments to compensation, we're looking to either reduce our expenditures or increase our revenue for a total of 26.7 million.
Okay. And so that means out of this list of 37.3 million, in other words, we can get back to 20? In other words, we can remove items off of this for 26.7 million? Or we can trade, so that's sort of the bottom line. So there would be an opportunity to either take things off of this list, or if there are other places where we can go, et cetera. So...
Ms. Strauss, some of the things are included. So some of the things are included in this?
Yes, yes. I know. But what I'm saying is, there is a delta of 11 million?
It's 21 million. If you take all the gray out.
Right.
It's actually 20.9 million.
Okay.
That's on the list.
20.9 million, okay.
Correct. And just for a point of clarification, included on this list was a change to ERFC, so in that total of just over 20 million is ERFC.
Right, I know. That's in another situation. So the bottom line is, some of the things that are on this current proposed list could be removed, and depending on how much we want to remove, it might have to be placed by some other idea. But with the list that is, that is here, we could choose not, to choose some of the things that are on this list.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. So right now, I, the one piece I definitely would not support is the elimination of the fourth grade strings program.
Right, Ms. Strauss, if I might, Ms. Ternakofax, I think you hit the nail on the head. Yeah, what we're trying to do is get that combination of things that aren't going to meet with the approval of the board, so let's take them out of consideration, so that I can come to you Monday with a combination of some recommendation for your, for your consideration. And so as we've been talking, I've heard, you know, some, some stance on certain things on the list here, and it would be helpful for us to continue to move through. We can go one at a time, or we can kind of go around. I know there's a lot of questions, we can look at those. But one of the results we'd like to have is, if there's something that the majority of the board doesn't want to keep in consideration, let's go ahead and, and move forward with removing that from the list, so that I don't bring it for, to you on Monday for, if it's not going to meet with your approval.
So just as a point of clarification, if we include everything on the superintendent's list that wasn't already included, even if we do everything, we're still going to be short another approximately 6.5 million in order to close this gap, right? So you certainly have the ability to take things off the list, put things on, but even with everything on this list, we still have a gap of about 6.5 million.
Thank you for that. That's, that's important, I think, an important number to keep in our heads as we go through this. Ms. McLaughlin.
I'm perfectly happy to support my colleagues on the fourth grade band and, or the fourth grade strings. And that's simply because when I look at this list right now, and I think about some of the information the board is still asking for, I, I don't feel that it's justified to take that type of a cut into instruction. I very much have appreciated the advocacy of the teachers and the community who understand the value of this program. And they have raised concerns about whether or not the projected savings are actually realistic. And we do know that when we cut positions and teachers have to take on more schools, they're traveling on the road, and that's lost time. And I haven't seen an explanation that tells us what will happen in terms of staffing and coverage of those students if they're not in fourth grade strings. It has felt a little bit like the conversation's been, here's some information, and then some of our teachers in the buildings are running through the estimated scenarios and saying it doesn't, we don't believe that's actually going to deliver the kind of cost savings that this line item shows. So that's one thing that I would support in terms of helping Dr. Lockard with what to take off. I will say, I'm, I'm hopeful that a majority of my colleagues will join me on this one. I think we absolutely should be giving direction to the superintendent to remove the athletic fees for students. First of all, we've never considered a $150 fee. Fairfax County did, a few years ago, have a $100 fee per student, but a $150 fee certainly makes the number attractive, 3.8 million versus 2.5, if you were doing a $100 fee. But either way, I think it is very harmful. About a third of our high school students participate in high school sports. We know that it lends itself to higher student achievement, let alone all of the social, emotional qualities that come from it, the opportunities for students to develop their skills and opportunities, and many to go on to play at the college level. And we also know that our families, you know, do come with a sliding economic degree of need. What's also concerning to me, that I want to make sure my colleagues understand, in my conversations with both athletic directors, or as we call them, Directors of Student Activities, the DSAs, and also Athletic Booster Board members and presidents, our Athletic Booster organizations bring well over a million dollars a year, and that is as conservative as I can be in how much money. It's probably several million. But I know for certain that our Athletic Boosters bring $15,000 apiece every year to our turf, synthetic turf replacement field funds. Then they also typically provide additional, anywhere, depending on the success of the Booster Club, it can be $10,000 to sometimes $50,000 or more per high school, that these Booster Clubs are bringing to augment what's going on. And maybe even a better way of looking at it, when you talk to most Directors of Student Activities, they will tell you that only about 50% of their operating funds every year are coming from the FCPS budget, and the other 50% is coming from our parent supports in each, in each of our high schools. Putting a fee on here, from a very real standpoint, the Booster Clubs are saying, look, parents have a finite amount of money to bring to the table. So if you raise this fee, then the $50 a person annual Booster memberships that they bring, and I'll cite the McLaughlin family, we buy four Booster passes a year, that's $200 that just our family brings to support Woodson Boosters. You start charging fees, and families are going to say, I don't have any more to be able to give. So where we think we might gross 3.8 out of that line item, the net result is not only that you may not even get half that, but you might even actually net lose money, because the Booster Clubs not only give dollars, they give significant amount of time and dedication. They run all of our concessions, which also bring in tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I don't mean to go on, but I think I'm a little worried that I still see this line item here, and so I really hope that more voices will come to the table and say, that one needs to come off, it does not serve us well. At a more macro level, and I'm sorry, my screen just froze on me, I would like to say that in terms of how we're approaching this, which is what should come off versus what should actually be on here instead, I kind of wish we were doing this a little bit differently, which is, what do we know we're adding into our budget over last year from the highest dollar value going down? And I'll give you an example. The 1% market scale adjustment, the cost of living, you know, it's delineated up above, clearly that it's 7.9 million for non-teachers. We've still struggled to get the teacher 1% noted, but that right there is almost $8 million. That should be shown on this, quite frankly, because the board supervisors are, have done their budget markup. They followed their executive, they, yeah, sorry, county executive Ed Long's guidance, which is there isn't enough funding to do a 1% MSA plus a step. If we were reflecting that there, I think for a lot of us on the board, we would understand that we're not necessarily starting to, once again, target and hit our families with fees and things, when there are other areas that I think are reasonable in the, in terms of fairness and equity to county employee raises, school employee raises, what the region is supporting for raises. So Dr. Lockard and to our budget chair and vice chair, I really think that, that today's conversation, if not today, then absolutely by Monday, that's, that's a big number.
I don't disagree. I think that's important to, to do that, and I think, you know, that will be something that, that we should definitely highlight in Monday's discussion. That's, that's something that we'll, we'll, we'll talk about.
Okay. And then, in terms of, if you're just wanting me to speak to what I'm sitting here looking at, you know, the only other thing that, it's a half a million dollars, the student parking fee, there is no school system in the region that charges $300, and this will affect 6,700 students and their families. I think it is, again, the wrong message to send to our families, half a million dollars, I can't even do the math on what tenth of 1% that is in our budget. I don't think it speaks well, putting that in there. We are already well above what we should be charging as a parking fee. Frankly, we shouldn't be charging one at all. I've made that argument many, many times, but I would like to see that one put off, pulled off, because I think it harms us in terms of goodwill with our families, and, and it's a negligible amount of funding. So that's in terms of this list here. And then I would like to say, I echo comments shared by Ms. Corbett Sanders. I do hope that by Monday, we are going to see some, I was, I was promised and reassured by staff that we would start to see what are non-teaching position reductions coming forward. We know from this chart in front of us, 238 teaching positions are potentially at risk. Now, we're looking at taking strings off, and that's good news, but we still, we're at April 27th, and we don't have a single position noted here that's outside of the teachers. And I, I really struggle with what we're communicating, and that it's this late that we don't have a single position identified as of yet. So that's concerning to me, and, and, you know, I'll cede my time at this point.
Mr. Moon, did you have something to say regarding that, or do you have a go back? Because you've already spoken. Did you have something to speak directly to Ms. McLaughlin's point? Mr. Moon?
Are we ready for a go back?
No, we're not ready for go backs. I just wanted to know, was it a go back for you?
That was a go back.
Okay.
That was a go back.
All right. I have Ms. Huff.
Just being honest.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll echo, oh, sorry. I'll echo Ms. McLaughlin on, it's really hard to be picking direct student programs when, you know, the budget question is still evolving about what are the surrounding districts. So not only is the county not doing the MSA, but I haven't seen in the budget answer a single other public school system that is doing an MSA. So I heard you say we're going to discuss that next week. I appreciate that. And I don't actually know where I'm going to land on it, but I think we do need to talk about it. And when that's, when that's getting upwards of 8, 10, probably more if we're talking about teachers, I think that it's hard to be looking and saying, telling some teachers now that they're not going to be, there were some students now that they're going to be crammed in tighter in their classrooms. So I actually don't support the increase in class size. I didn't support it. Last time, we took a consensus on it, and I still don't support it. I'm going to put something else out there. In lieu of Band and Strings, which I'm seeing is the 2.8 million dollar figure, I would like to hear some feedback next week from Dr. Lockard and staff about the foreign language in elementary school, which I believe is a comparable figure. The feedback I get time and time again from students and parents and families is that they don't feel that their students are getting a huge benefit out of that program. I think language is incredibly important, but it has to be effective. We've talked a lot about the dual-language schools, and we've actually talked that those don't increase our budget. I would love to see us doing more of that, and at a $3 million figure, less of foreign language elementary schools, especially when I hear time and time again on the ground the benefits of Band and Strings to our students. So that is something I would like my colleagues to consider. And then along the lines of Ms. Corbett Sanders' questions, I would like to ask a little bit about, we had an audit report out on asset management, and we were looking at the bus maintenance and our contract, or lack of contracts with the county. I wanted to see if management has had time to do any look at that, and see if we can identify any savings in the maintenance of our buses for this coming fiscal year.
Ms. Ternakofax, if I might just ask a quick question. In terms of what Ms. Huff just spoke to about foreign language in the elementary school, is that, is that something that I need to ask, is that the full board's desire for me to bring that back?
What I think, the way I'll do this, you know, right now, Ms. Corbett Sanders has a list, I think hers are questions that need to be answered. Ms. Huff is talking to program. I think maybe what I can do is ask at the end here, right now, I had somebody go Band and Strings off the list, and Ms. Huff is now asking to, for you to look into a specific programming. So I'll take a vote on that to see if the board is supportive of that. I'll do that just the way I think Band and Strings, or do you want, would you prefer just to look into that? I can do, we can do it either way, because there's a fine line between overall questions.
Yeah, mine's sort of an informative one as well. I'd hate for the board to, to vote on a program right now.
Right.
Like I said, I'm doing this based on feedback I'm receiving, and it's something I didn't see, and maybe staff and Dr. Lockard have a reason for that, but given the amount of times I hear about it, I would like to hear more about it.
Can you be very specific in your question, what you want of staff? What would you like to see on Monday?
So it's already been a budget question, as far as the, the fiscal impact, sorry?
It's a budget question.
Yeah, it's a budget question, right. So I have that information, but I guess I would like some opinion from Instructional Services on feedback they're getting on the ground. Like I said, I, as a mom in the school system, and now as a school board member, it's just a program, I receive a lot of feedback that some kids enjoy it, some kids actually dread it, but at the end of the day, in terms of the overall impact, it's not giving them a language advantage going forward. So I guess I'd like staff's opinion on that, especially if we were to weigh it against Band and Strings, per se, what that would look like.
Okay, Dr. Lockard, would you think you will be able to provide some type of opinion by Monday with Instructional Services? I know that's very hard, because you're, you're, you're asking to, but perhaps...
If he has a preference on how to do it, maybe he and I can sidebar, and I can talk to my colleague. I'm happy to do it that way, and then can bring it forward if it's appropriate. Would you prefer that?
I would, because I don't want to try to guess and then miss the mark with you and, and you needing more.
That's fair. Okay, so I'll go ahead and do that work.
So we'll have a sidebar conversation, and then we'll see what's available for the fuller board on Monday when it comes forward.
Okay. And then my other follow-up question on that, on the maintenance of the buses, I'd appreciate some more information on where we are with that, and if we feel we can identify some savings in, in that area.
Okay.
Ms. Ternakofax, if I might, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just want to jump in one more time.
That's what this is, a conversation.
Thanks. I just want to remind the, the board, the generated list of potential ideas that came forward was a combination of, if you remember, I gave some criteria for why some of these things were on here. And we also looked at the work of the Budget Task Force over the last two years, okay? In terms of Ms. McLaughlin's comment, as it relates to some of the other compensation pieces needing to see those, so on Monday, I'll certainly be prepared to have that front and center, along with some of these other considerations. That's why we've presented those in the past, that's why we gave the school board the budget tool, to kind of look at this, because we recognize, to your point, Mrs. Huff, as we look at other school districts in terms of... look at other school districts in terms of folks who are giving MSAs or not, that's why we provided that tool probably a month ago, so people could start to manipulate, if you will, some of those things, along with some of these considerations. So we'll be prepared on Monday to bring that back.
Wonderful. Thank you. I have you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, as a go back. While my other colleagues are thinking, sinking also. That was Freudian. Oh, I didn't see you. Were you on the list? Okay. I was going to take a turn, but I'll give you the turn because as the Budget Chair, I should go last. So Ms. Huff, I didn't see you. And Ms. Hines. Okay.
Ms. Palchik?
Did I call you the wrong name? I called you Ms. Huff again.
Ms. Huff.
My apologies.
No, no worries. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I had, I guess, first to start off, just a couple of questions for staff. The first one, as you mentioned, Ms. Michael, that the change from the 11 million to 14.7 million, some of that, as we go school by school, it's instructional staff, but it sounded like there were other custodial and other staff impacted?
That's correct. Our class size formula impacts other positions as well. So, for example, at the elementary level, when we look at office assistants, they're dependent on the number of teacher positions in that school. So as teacher positions change, then office assistants would as well. So it'll impact positions like assistant principals, office assistants, custodial, all of those.
Okay. Can I assume that since you did go school by school, you have a comprehensive list of the impacts on schools? And could we have that for Monday?
Yes, we'll get the list of the impacts by school and the total positions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. My other question, and I believe you've answered this before, but just for clarification, on all of the recommendations, or the potential, sorry, list on the superintendent's budget, for those that do have fees associated with them, have we, in that savings, included all foreseeable costs, whether administrative or other, to the system? And implementing fees, is that included, or could there be a cost that maybe we don't see there?
We did, when we look at athletic fees, the impact to the system, schools are already collecting parking fees. So if that parking fee were to increase, it's just collecting a different fee amount. And we also took into consideration that pupil placement fees would be collected centrally. So really looking at that impact as well.
Okay. And so you're saying the athletic fees could just be done through the current system?
So we know the collection of athletic fees is a burden on schools. Well, we've worked really hard this year to implement e-commerce, so parents have the ability to pay the fees online. Even with that, we do know that there will be an impact at the school level in terms of collecting those fees.
Okay, thank you.
And the savings that we projected did include providing schools with funding to help mitigate that cost of collecting those fees.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. I think those are my questions for now, just to share where I am. I have similar concerns about changes to both the strings and the athletic programs. I think both provide academic and social-emotional development, performance-based instruction, team building, and other things. As a student who would not have had a chance to do strings, I did fourth, fifth, and sixth grade strings and transitioned to band in middle school, I do know the importance of keeping that. I remember when I was little, before my grandfather passed away, he was just in awe that we were able to offer that to students and wished he had had the opportunity growing up. So thank you for your continued advocacy. For Ms. Huff's point on foreign language elementary school, as you know, I am a foreign language elementary school teacher. I highly, strongly support this program while also supporting our transition. And I know Dr. Duran and his team are working very hard for a long-term plan to move us toward dual immersion programs. They are the most effective way and cost-efficient. They do pose a lot of challenges, including staffing and implementation, so it is not something that we can do quickly, nor at every single school in our county. So I do, if we are getting information, I would love, as well, I'm losing my mind tonight, Dr. Lockard, if we could get a sense of, and with Dr. Presidio, steps that are being taken to improve, you know, fidelity of implementation. Because while I hear concerns in some schools of the FLESH program, and in other schools, you know, teacher and the program make a huge difference, where really, it's very much appreciated, and the research is out there, that while ideally, we would have it at least three times a week, so that's disappointing that we can't, that even the program that we do have, I know, is also addressing STEM at the same time, and should be helping with other academic needs and math. So if we could get kind of a brief overview of what is being done to continue to improve that program, I would really appreciate it.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I want to apologize for being late. I was not able to reschedule my day to get here an hour early for our evening meeting tonight. And I will look at the video afterwards to see what I missed from everyone. And if I say anything that, you know, Ms. Darnett Kofax, just let me know if I say anything that's already been covered.
No worries.
Okay. One thing, you know, I also cannot support cutting fourth-grade strings. I think, you know, it's one of those things that makes us who we are. And if we're going to continue to attract the families and teachers and businesses to this community, we need to have programs like that. Not to mention, it's just also really, really, really good for kids. Really, everybody should be doing it. So the only other thing I really want to touch on is the class size increase of 0.5 for elementary school, middle school, and high school. And that saves $14.7 million. You know, once again, when you go to class size, you save a big chunk of money. So I understand why we go there when, yet again, we are looking for savings. Our revenue is not what it needs to be, and we are looking for savings. However, you know, as a classroom teacher and as someone who represents the 100-mill district, where we have several schools that have been battling with very high elementary class sizes, I just, I really cannot support this. And, you know, when you look at one of the documents, I think it's the one we have up there tonight, it says fundamental to student learning, the elementary class size formula is in that box, fundamental to student learning. And so I think we should do everything we can to avoid making that change. Now, I sent around to my colleagues a few days ago, an email where I tried, because now, since it's $14.7 million, I don't feel like I can just sit here and say, "Don't do it." I have to figure out how to pay for it, right? We have to find other savings to pay for it. And I came up with a list of savings, some of which are already, it looks like, embedded in the superintendent's recommendation. So I, you know, may have to look for other savings. But some of the things, you know, I found $14.7 million in the various lists of things that we've looked at over the last couple of years. But I also added raising the employee contribution to ERFC by a half a percent. And that saves $7 million, which gets us halfway there. I also put on, you know, $3 million in department reductions, $1.8 million in, some money in targeted class size changes. So $1.8 million to raise class size for AAP, Elementary and Middle School Centers, raising the class floor, class size floor from 17 to 18, which saves $1 million. And then also, you know, AP and IB test fees, at least some of them, the package that we've come up with over time saves $1.1 million. Pupil placement fee for some programs of a half a million dollars. And then eliminating the minimum of two teachers per grade in very small elementary schools, which only saves, you know, $300,000. But I was able to come up with $14.7 million, which cancels out the, you know, half a kid class size increase, to the extent that, you know, some of those things are going to happen anyway. I'll have to look elsewhere. And so if, you know, any of my colleagues on the board are as concerned as I am about the class size increase and want to help me find the savings to pay for that, please let me know. Because by Monday, you know, I hope to really put that to my colleagues as a serious conversation. It's going to be hard for me to vote for a budget that raises class size after all we've done to try to bring it back from where we were. It is not okay for Fairfax County Public Schools to have elementary class sizes of 30. It's just not okay. So.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Ms. Hines, I would echo your thoughts on the class size. I think that's one thing that has become very clear to me during my time on the board and my experience with my wife working in the public schools, is class size really does matter. And I think that at class sizes in the elementary school at 30 students is something that's just really... It's a shame that we have that situation in Fairfax County. And I think adding more to the class side load on teachers is, again, something that we certainly do want to avoid. I haven't reached conclusions on sort of how I would breach, or reach the gap to cover the difference between what our revenues are and our budget needs. However, I am very concerned about loading on fees on families. If you have a family who has two high school students who play sports, and take a number of AP and IB tests, and maybe you, people place them into an IB school, that family could be looking at $1,000 in fees from Fairfax County for that school year. And I just think that, as I've said before, you know, maybe we can't do it, but we have to try to be as creative as possible not to turn the school system into a fee-for-service organization, because that's really not fair. And it does burden, actually, the most, those families who probably can afford it the least. Because if there's, if we're going to pay for the low-income families, which I think is appropriate, and then the wealthy families are quite capable of paying for it, there's this vast middle that actually, every month, they have to figure out how they're going to parse out their income to cover all of their expenses. And when you throw on more and more fees, it really strikes right at the heart of those families. So that's just my thoughts for now. And I think that now we have arrived at that point, where hopefully we're going to have a lot of substantive and meaningful conversations about how we can cover the gap in our budget.
Anyone else before I go to go backs? Not a go backs yet. Oh, Ms. Evans, you didn't do, no? Okay. All right. For me, I will speak to what some of my colleagues have spoken to. I, too, would not be supporting, I would support taking band and strings off the list to look at. Again, my children were both lucky enough to have amazing string teachers. One transitioned to band the next year. One, my son played through 11th grade, and then in 12th grade, he could no longer take it, but he still played in the orchestra. So it's something that, the arts are something I've supported every step of the way from the time my kids have stepped into school. And so it's something that, and I appreciate your advocacy, and I understand how hard you've worked. And it's, this is difficult for us on so many levels, because if we take this off, we have to take from somewhere else. And none of us want to be in this position. All of us wish we were basically talking about the goal reports and not here, and just really looking forward. But we are where we are because how we're funded. So I would, I would not be supported at this time of taking class size off the list. I think that's something, while I appreciate why, it's not ideal. I think those are monies which we need this year. And the one thing that I, and I, too, sent around something to my colleagues earlier today, what I would like to take off the list, and I have been advocating for this, to take AP and IB test fees off the list. And we might be able to work with that in some way. But as Mr. Wilson, you said it very well a second ago. You said there's a vast middle every month, that they don't know how they'll make ends meet. And that happens each month. And you said $1,000 in fees if you play a sport, if you do this. Well, IB tests would cost about a thousand, six tests cost $1,000 for kids if you're getting the full diploma. And many kids are not getting the full diploma, but they're still taking five tests. So that's 800-some dollars. My colleagues, I really encourage you, there were 54 students that took the time to handwrite-type letters to us about what, how this impacts them. And some of these, you might say, "Well, you know, we said we'll play for FRM." Some students' families choose not to identify that way. And it's extremely important that we... I just want to read one of them, and I might be reading several of these, because I have 54 to choose from. But it says, "One of my classmates' families would be put in financial stress in order to pay for this. If the school board were to implement the policy of paying for their own exams, there could be a sudden drop. Students would become more inclined to take standard and honors courses. No longer will a student be able to test their academic knowledge to their fullest potentials if they not, cannot be paid for exams. And a student's education should be what propels them towards success, not a barrier." So we offer this program. I think there's that vast middle there. So I would hope my colleagues would support me in taking that off the list as one of the things that comes off the list. I am looking forward to, I know in this conversation alone, we probably have got our staff working all through the weekend, up till Monday. And that concerns me as well, because we've all been burning the candle at both ends. But, so, you know, we will still have these items. I think it's important, it's extremely important that the board get the answers to their questions. And, but if, you know, I know Ms. Huff said you were going to sidebar. Anybody else who's put forward things, if you want to sidebar and go forward, to staff as they, you know, work their way through answering your questions. But I think all your questions are thoughtful and good, and give us opportunities to look at other monies, because we still have a $26 million gap. And now we're adding to it if we take off some of these things as well. So I have several go backs, and I will start with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, if not today, at least on Monday, I will be speaking in favor of putting, eliminating MSA for non-teachers, non-teaching positions for the next year. That is about $7.9 million, that is correct? Okay. So thanks for bringing it up, Mrs. McGlaughlin. And as far as these various fees are concerned, I know that they are all burdensome on our parents and students. But if we remove, completely remove those from the list, we have to make them up somehow from somewhere else, whether it's of teacher compensation, or further class size increase, or removing the programs, or just, you know, making further position cuts somewhere. It has to come from somewhere. So with it in mind, $150 per sports, I believe that that is excessive in my mind, but I am still willing to consider lesser amount than $150 per sports. For AP and IB tests, for the same reason, I am willing to consider, you know, students bearing some burden, some burden, for, as written in the description section of that AP/IB test, especially for IB test. Correct me if I'm not, if I'm reading this wrong. First three IB tests each school year will be paid for by FCPS. So if an IB candidate, diploma candidate has to take seven IB tests, correct? How many tests?
I believe it's six.
Six. Do they normally take all?
Dr. Presidio, six.
Do they normally take all six in one year, or do they split them between their juniors and senior year? Whether it's usually 3-3, or 4-2, or 1-5, rather than 0-6?
It's typically split over two years. Most of them...
I'm trying to see how they're split. It could be 1-5 split, or it could be...
There's not, there's not one formula for that. It depends on the test that the student is taking. But most, the majority of the tests are taken in the senior year, but usually about two tests would be taken in the junior year.
Two, so two and four, it could be. Then, senior year, if we pay for three tests out of four in senior year, that means students will end up paying just one test. In the senior year, junior years will cover their two tests anyway. So for their IB diploma, test, required test... test, required test of a six, they will end up paying just for one test. And students in poverty, that we will cover all the test fees. Is that, is that, is my understanding correct? Again, I'm looking at the description.
Yes, all of our estimates in terms of fees, regardless of the type of fee, included us waiving them for students that are eligible for free or reduced price meals.
Okay. Uh, so even though, you know, paying for any test, you know, may be considered a burdensome, but if you are only paying one test out of six, I don't know whether this is burdensome as one may think.
Appreciate that. Uh, just since I have it on my mind and I'll probably forget it, um, is, is it possible just to change the formula for that rather than have three each year, at least for the IB program? You could have six over total of your high school career. I, and I, and I, you don't have to answer that now, but, um, if you can. It's, I, I'm reading your lips. It's-
I, I think you're requesting us to cost it as if we would pay for six IB tests over a high school.
Well, the way, Mr. Mr. Moon brought up something that I didn't see. I, I saw three tests and it was my, when I was proposing my advocacy, I was, it says three tests and he pointed out that it's three tests each school year. And so, um, as Dr. Persidio pointed out and, you know, as a parent of IB student, I understand that it could be two, one year, four, one year, three and three. So is it possible to cost it, would it, would the change, will the cost be any different if you costed it out six over the term of your high school year, of your career?
I, I would guess that the savings would decrease, right? Because currently, the way it was worded, if there's paying for three and they take more than three, we would be receiving those fees from the students versus if it were six overall and there's really six fees in total, right? I, I would estimate that that would decrease the savings that we projected.
So we would probably have to poll the information regarding how many tests are being taken by the IB students from one year to the next year in order to calculate that.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll consider asking you to do that or not. I, I'm just trying to just figure out the best way we can get the most information from Monday's work session. Thank you. We're, we're on go-backs and Ms. Schultz is next. You want, you want to yield to Ms. Evans? Ms. Ms. Schultz, is it okay?
Okay. Thanks. Okay. I just, I want to, want to put it out there that, that, um, my top goal here is to find the best way that we can increase teacher pay. As we've said time and time again, is our top priority, including finding a way to increase the, the teacher scale. That's something that we have said over and over again. We need to increase the teacher's scale. So I, I just don't want to lose sight of that as we're talking about these, um, somewhat, um, small items and are taking, kind of taking more and more off the plate. Um, I, I think we have to find a way to bring up those, the scale, um, whether that's MSA and I would, my preference would be both MSA and the, the, um, the investment, as I tend to call it, uh, in the, the mid-career teacher's scale as well. I have heard from a few folks who are beyond step, that while they appreciate how much we're, we're doing at the mid-range, they, they also feel that it's important that, um, they don't just year after year not have, um, a cost of living increase. And I agree with that. You know, our veteran teachers, um, are looking to us to increase their salaries as well. So I just didn't want to lose sight of that as we're looking at, um, some of these smaller items. Um, I have, have grave concerns about, um, AP and IB fees for the same reasons that Ms. Darnett Kofax does. Uh, if we're, if we're looking at some small amount, perhaps we could figure out some formula where it, um, it, it would have a, a really low impact. But I, I'm, I'm troubled by it because, uh, particularly at our, at our high poverty schools. Um, for the same reason as much as, as the athletic fees seem like it, they, they might be an okay idea. I think it could be discouraging to, um, significant numbers of, of students, particularly those who are kind of just above the, the FRM level. And I know we, we do, um, uh, say that anyone who qualifies for free and reduced meals would be, would get a waiver, but it, it still can be a burden. And I, it troubles me that so many of the fees we look at, they're, they're all on high school parents, uh, high school parents where they're looking at, um, at significant costs. You know, they're, they're looking at, at post-secondary education. So we have to be cognizant of that too. So, um, I'll look forward to what, whatever, um, other suggestions people have on that. I will say, um, I have been supportive and continue to be supportive of, of a pupil placement fee with the, the FRM waiver. Um, I, I, I think that's, that's reasonable to, when, when people say, "I, I prefer my child go to this school rather than, than the, the one at which they, um, they've been assigned by their boundary." Uh, I think that's a reasonable, uh, fee, even though we don't like fees. And, uh, the parking fee, I know this also ends up being controversial, but, uh, I, I think that that's an area where we can afford to, uh, to raise that. So, um, the other, the other things, I, I guess, I, I, I hope we can kind of wrap up some of these things with, that are, they are smaller in nature because we're gonna have to, to deal with the larger questions of how do we go about, um, dealing with compensation? Because that's really our, our, our biggest task to my mind.
Ms. Schultz.
So I, I apologize. When I went first, I wasn't exactly sure about the format that you wanted, Ms. Darnett Kofax. So I have a little bit more clarity now. Um, uh, my, my first question was clear that I'm not gonna support class size. Um, and if anything, I'd actually rather go into the budget and fix it a little bit more. Um, and I, I do believe, a little bit like I believe, uh, Ms. Evans was just suggesting, um, I agree on the lanes. Um, I am concerned that there, the, if you don't, if you fix the lanes or at least maybe a portion of the lanes, you know, at least something. Um, and we could potentially, because it was originally, um, multi-year, um, and there's no reason why we couldn't add one more year. I mean, if we're fixing something-
Extended to-
-that is a, a, a long-term problem, then we're in control of what we fix. But I am concerned a little bit that, um, that there are long-term teachers who really are our instructional leaders in the buildings, um, who will see nothing as a result of that. And I, I'm concerned about that. And, um, all along, I've proposed some type of MSA for teachers. Um, I maintain that. Um, I think that, um, we're messaging the wrong thing with raising class size and not doing anything for teachers. Um, at the very same time that we've heard about a national teacher shortage, um, and the difficulty in recruiting, you know, and I've talked to, you know, um, a number of senior staff as well as principals who go on recruiting trips and where, you know, there were, you know, 22 or 52 or 100 candidates in line at a table with Fairfax County Public Schools, there's now two. And we've heard the statistic that, um, the number of students in, um, teaching college or in, in a education major in Virginia colleges is down 40% and the national average is down 30%. We, we have a massive problem on our hands. And I think that we could either choose to be, and, and Ms. McLaughlin and I have had, um, robust conversations about, um, whether or not surrounding jurisdictions are doing this and whether we're on, on parity with surrounding jurisdictions. And on this, I think that if we don't, um, scale back class size and do something for teachers, we're perpetuating our problem in the future, attempting to not only recruit, which recruits and brings in the best candidates, therefore creating the best peers for our, our instructional leaders who are in the, in the buildings. So then you're getting into, you know, collaborative teams, you know, um, the efficacy of professional development, which is often best led as teacher to teacher. So we're, we're creating a bigger problem down the road for ourselves if we don't address it. Um, and I know that, um, we haven't necessarily had the time, you and I, Ms. Darnett Kofax, and I'm hoping that we get some in the, I don't know, in the next 72 hours, um, uh, to have some conversation offline. I've been fortunate, I've been very appreciative of Ms. Michael and Ms. Quinn and, um, certainly, uh, Mr. Paris and, um, having some of the offline conversations on, on a list. And I do have a list. Um, uh, one of the questions I want to ask at this point, um, whether it's Ms. Quinn or Ms. Michael, I recall us having at a previous work session, a discussion about, um, fees in buildings and the bifurcation, receiving a bifurcation because there's a difference between community use fees in our buildings by, for example, groups that represent largely students, that are, um, athletic groups, um, boy scouts, girl scouts, you know, things of that nature, and all these other organizations that are frankly, organization-heavy and, and high use, heavy use on our buildings. And I have frankly, no problem, you know, if some organization wants to hold an event at one of our schools and is a heavy use on our schools as opposed to anything that will impact, um, families and student use. Could you have, I don't recall seeing any information on that. And maybe we got it? I don't, I don't remember.
So my computer locked up, so I was just rebooting it, so I can't pull up the budget question response. But we did provide a breakdown of all of the hours of community use, just as you had requested, um, based on those user groups. But you're giving me a great opportunity to talk about budget questions if I can for just a minute. Um, when we look at the budget questions overall, right, we've answered just about 90 questions. We do still have three that are outstanding, two of which are related to community use. Um, so we have a question about the fees that the county is charging us for use of their facilities, right? And we have multiple departments that are working on finalizing that information, looking across the, the different departments that interact with the county. We also have the question outstanding in terms of what's the cost of community use? So how much are we subsidizing community use? So those two questions are outstanding. But yours regarding the hours of usage by those specific groups and examples of who's included in those groups, um, was posted as budget question number 65. So then if I can take just one more-
Sure.
... privilege, I really have to thank, um, all of the staff in Budget Services as well as all of the other departments, um, who've worked really hard in terms of answering these budget questions. Um, I know it took us a long time to do some of these questions, um, but I know they worked really hard at doing them and many of them required a lot of data. When I was at the county last Friday, I was looking at their budget questions. I haven't looked since last Friday, but just as kind of a point of reference, they had answered, for questions on their side, a total of 30, right? They also had some questions where we provided the answers, but we've answered 90, so substantially more. Um, so I, I just really wanted to thank everybody who worked really hard and it really took a huge effort from a ton of people. So I, I just really want to thank them.
So, so I cer- so I certainly appreciate that because I, I, there's no doubt that I asked, you know, I'm, I'm, I think I'm known as a pointed question asker, if, if that's a thing, that's a thing. Um, so my question would be then, in the bifurcation effort, was there actually the opportunity to levy, um, an even greater amount of community use fees once that bifurcation was done? Because I, I recall the figure that we got originally was before the bifurcation. And I'm happy to attribute more, like, I'm not willing, basically, what, what I'm saying is to, to continue to subsidize organizations using taxpayer facilities with taxpayer money. So if there is an opportunity after that bifurcation to attribute, um, and align more of the cost to those organizations, I would be interested in doing that. Um, and that would be, with a number of my colleagues who are expressing concern, um, I will never support, um, uh, lev- levying more fees on parents through the parking fees. On the, uh, with the AP and IB fees, I see that as, um, reasonable and appropriate and parents know what they're signing up for and there is college credit, um, to be had. And, and Ms. Ms. Darnett Kofax, I know, I see, I get what you're saying. And if there is a way that you and I can work to accommodate, um, the students for which you have a concern, whether it's, you know, by scholarship, by identification at the school level, I'm willing to work with you, but it can't be an all-or-nothing. It can't be, um, everybody gets subsidized or nobody gets subsidized. The answer lies in the middle and that's how we could, I believe, we could reasonably work it out.
I believe in compromise as well, but it, it's gonna take some-
I don't see on this list FLESS. FLESS is 2.9 million dollars. It's actually less expensive to have an immersion school than it is a FLESS school. I have no interest in continuing, um, uh, the, the costly underwriting of, of foreign language, 30 minutes twice a week to the tune of $3 million. Um, the, the, these are where there's real choices to be made. Um, it, and, and I made this argument three years ago when we expanded FLESS, that we were spending more money to expand FLESS than actually doing immersion. And this is to me where the rubber hits, uh, where the rubber meets the road, whatever. So, um, I, I, I am interested in putting, um, uh, FLESS on the table. In addition, and this one's not gonna be popular, um, we have ESOL, um, which has grown 22 and a half percent in the last four years. Um, and next year, we're gonna have a decrease by 2.86% in the number of students. Um, almost, uh, over 4,700 of those students are over the age of 18. And, um, I think it is reasonable and appropriate to maintain, I'm not saying cut, but I'm saying as opposed to growing. So we have almost 3% fewer students coming in. We have a 2 and a half percent increase and the cost per service on ESOL is approximating $4,000 a student. I think that's untenable. I think we've got to find a way to better manage it when we have thousands and thousands and thousands of these students, um, who are 18 and over. And so I think it is reasonable to direct the costs predominantly to, um, a restriction, um, to the current funding level. Um, and that would save 2.9 million dollars. Uh, that's, uh, we're already spending 117 mil-, uh, 121 million this year. It would go down to 117 million and we would save another 2.9 on top. So that's another thing that, um, I'm considering. Another one that is, um, on the list, and so when people are looking for ways to meet us, please feel free, um, I imagine we're gonna be on the phone a lot in the next few days. Um, everybody over there may want to cover their ears. Um, we have 23 holidays, uh, a year in a calendar year that are 11 and 12 month, mostly, mostly 12 month, but there's a few 11-month employees, um, are paid, are paid to stay home. 23. Our teachers are not paid for any of those days. Not for winter break, not for spring break, not for all the federal holidays. Our teachers go home and they're unpaid because that's what their contract says. And I'm having a difficulty in the parity of that. Um, at the exact same time that we have a national teacher shortage, we're having difficulty recruiting, we have difficulty in retention, um, to keep that broad, um, uh, frankly, it's a chasm. It's a chasm between, you know, the teachers go home for two weeks at winter break and they're not earning any money. So I, um, and just so you know, if you're looking for money, and I'm not saying all of it, um, but, uh, that represents 13.8 million dollars.
Could I have just a moment to talk about the paid holidays?
Mm-hmm.
I, I was gonna say, as, as staff and HR and financial services know, that's one of my favorite topics. So when, when we look at pay and if we consider somebody is paid for a holiday or not, I know when we talk about a teacher contract, we call it a 194-day contract, which that means they have to report to work 194 days, right? And, and then we base their wage by taking their salary and dividing it by that. But conversely, when we look at a 12-month employee, for whatever reason, historically, we've always reported it differently. Instead of doing what Loudon does and reporting the number of days people come to work, instead, we've always just said 260 days, right? Which counts those holidays, which they're not 23, but it counts the holidays where people don't have to come to work. So currently, right, because we calculate those hourly rates differently, when somebody moves from a teaching contract to a-
when somebody moves from a teaching contract to a 12-month contract, we actually decrease their hourly wage, right? So we're really getting paid the same. It's not that one's getting a paid holiday and one's not. It's really all the same.
Are you paid for Labor Day?
So what I would say to you is, I'm not.
Okay.
Right, just like a teacher, my pay is smoothed over the month, right? So I have an annual salary, and there are days when I have to report to work, just like teachers, and days when I don't.
So we can continue, I'm not going to belabor this right now. I think we're at machinations on that. And I have a host of others. I don't necessarily need to take up all of this time. Something that's small, but is, has been hanging on in perpetuity, and I don't know why. Three years ago, this board had a roundtable with the adult ed portion of FCPS, and we went through a very rigorous conversation with them about their need to be self-sufficient. And it was a hard conversation for them to, you know, say, "You're not living in mom and dad's basement anymore." And they were at about $440,000 of a supplement of our underwriting. And we talked about the fact that they would need to offer more classes where they make money, like driver's ed and ESOL, and offer, if they wanted to offer more classes where they don't make money or where they actually lose money. We're still supplementing them more than a quarter of a million dollars. And I think that it's time for that to come to an end. We signaled that a long time ago, and it persists. So I have more. There's a list, and I'm willing to, with offline, Ms. Corbett-Sanders and I have done some fruitful work. Mr. Paris and I have done some fruitful work. I've talked with a number of other board members about some of this. But I feel that if we decide tonight what the priorities are, or within the next 72 hours, because frankly, Dr. Lockard, I really appreciate some of your comments this evening, but there's, like you don't have necessarily maybe all the things, you know. I definitely think with the caring culture, for example, report that we got very good news about the increase in restorative justice referrals and the decrease in suspensions, the decrease in expulsions. I think it is time for us to curb back our hearings office. And so then the question becomes, how much? And since, as you're not prepared tonight for maybe quite some of the numbers, I don't think necessarily we're prepared tonight to give you hard guidance, but I think we could certainly take things, there's things that I think we're prepared to take off the table. It's just a question of, Ms. Darnack-Kofax, whether we have agreement on those.
Right, and I appreciate, well, Ms. Evans just got up from the table, but I appreciate her because I think it's necessary to go through some of those things as the staff had asked us for. And we started going through these things. And now the second round is where we're talking about other broader issues. But also, I think it's very important, what Ms. Evans said. I think the reason we're kind of chipping away at some of these things, because the main thing, you know, we all like to say that the main thing's the main thing. And this year, it has been about compensation. It has been about making certain that our teachers, we made that commitment. We are talking about that, you know, unfortunately, for those watching, we were not funded for all of our uncontrollable costs. And so this is why we're doing this. I think we're being very thoughtful and deliberate. And I think we're all going to be working this weekend to some extent. And, but I think, you know, if you want additional questions answered, I know staff will be available tomorrow to you. And Dr. Lockard, you know, Monday's coming. And you'll have something for us. And my intent is this right now. I'd like to finish, in the next 30 minutes, I have one, two, three go-backs, four go-backs, and maybe more. And then at that time, I think there's a few things that we're all talked about. It may be very few things at this point that we could take off the list, but I think we'll at least do a hands vote on that. I think the other portion, when we talk about, oh, the one thing I wanted to mention, because when we talked about the MSA, in the teacher scale implementation, that always was, and MSA was always in there for the teacher, 1%, correct?
That's correct. And I just wanted to make a quick comment, if I can, along the teacher scale. You know, teachers are our most important asset, I believe, in our school system. And I heard some comments about the teacher scales, and some of our teachers maybe not getting that significant increase or seeing any increase. When we worked with a consultant to design the scales, it was about getting everybody within that 95% to 105% of market average. And so we spread that out over some years and looked at that. Made a great first step last year. I just want to remind everybody that there might be some folks on the teacher scale who don't see either a significant increase or an increase because they're already at or above the market average. So I just wanted to remind us that as we look at how do we bolster all of our, you know, steps, and make sure we can attract and retain, that is a consequence of changing those scales.
Right, and it is, as you said, a current consequence. But I think it's important that you continue to remind us of this. You gave your presentation and gave that all to us, but as we go on and we each talk about chipping away at this to get where we need to be, sometimes we forget some of these points that were made earlier. So I have Karen Corbett-Sanders followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Sure, thank you. I just want to kind of bring us back to center about some of the decisions we've made in the past year, especially as a county. And we've talked about a one Fairfax and looking at our decisions with an equity lens. And so in looking at our decisions with an equity lens, it doesn't mean that, you know, when I see some of the things on this list, for example, raising the class floor, that means one whole group of students, their floor, we're talking increasing those class sizes by a full person. And then when we talk about other class sizes being raised by a half, I have a real concern that we then turn around and we might suggest or might consider saying, well, we don't want to raise all class sizes, but we'll raise the class sizes of the kids in advanced academic centers. And my concern about that is that those class sizes are typically larger than other class sizes already. And so I think that when we look at making our decisions, we don't want to put a disproportionate burden on one group of people or another. And so that's one of the reasons why, when I look at athletic fees, I think that the athletic fees here are significant. I would prefer to see them slightly lower, perhaps going back to the fees that were offered a few years ago, because I want to put it in context. And I'm, as my children used to laugh at me, because I would tell them every day that they were beautiful and smart and funny, and my daughters both say, "And you never said athletic." So they weren't quite as athletic as other kids, but they did do crew, and they did do band. And crew was close to $500 a year, and band was $500 a year, and orchestra was, I think, about $375 a year. And all of those organizations also had booster programs in which the parents were engaged in fundraising and contributing. And so doing an athletic fee to, for those areas that have not typically paid fees, let's remember to put it in the context of what's already out there. The other piece of it is, I get very nervous when we talk about FRM as being, well, as long as they've got FRM, then, you know, we'll give them a waiver. My experience is that as kids get older, they're reluctant to have their parents actually fill out the FRM forms because they don't want to have that label. And so although I can support some fees, I do want to encourage that we put it in the context of there are already people that are paying more than others to have their kids go to our public schools. And so one of the things I'd put on the table, as perhaps maybe a different way of looking at it, if we're looking to have fees from our middle and high schools, is that every child gets a locker. And if you did $5 per child in middle and high school per locker, you're almost at a half a million dollars. That's a little bit more palatable than increasing the parking fees, for example. And so I would just, you know, that may not be the right answer, but it is something that if we look at, you know, we can think out of the box, but let's not be disproportionately burdening one group or another.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Strauss.
So it's kind of fun to be going right after Ms. Corbett-Sanders because I do come from multiple generations of athletes, but not many of us had the talent for music. So, you know, it all comes in different packages and different talent levels. You know, I think at a macro level, our board conversations, and I mean this with as much respect as I can possibly convey, we need this at the leadership team level. And I don't think either one of us are doing it. And it's called having evidence-based decision-making on the budgets. I'll give you an example. I think that all 12 of us have big hearts. We care about our children who come from our most socioeconomically disadvantaged backgrounds. But then we start having these opinion-laden conversations without evidence. And specifically, let's look at AP and IB test fees. Montgomery County and Loudon County do not pay for these tests, except for those students who have financial need. If we're concerned that there's the gap between those who are FRM and those who have families of means to electively pay for a test that maybe the college will give you college credit, but other than that, we are not depriving them of taking the most rigorous courses available in our school system, why aren't we then talking to having staff go to Montgomery County and Loudon and say, "What has been your analysis? Do you have children who fall through the crack of, you know, needs-based, you know, FRM? We pay for their test fees, and then those that we don't? Do you have students who are not signing up to take the tests, and they've come to the school system and said, 'I'd like to take the test,' which, again, is elective, has nothing to do with taking the course, getting the weights, and using it as part of your college admissions competitiveness? The test at this point only serves to get college credit." And so that is a conversation that should be done with evidence because we have many kids who take the tests, and they don't even get the score that would qualify for college credit, but Fairfax County Schools is paying for them. And I think some of the recent data show that it may be only about half of our students score high enough to get college credit. So we're spending approximately $5 million a year, and $2.5 million of it isn't even accomplishing anything in terms of those kids getting college credit. But I really wish we would have conversations based in evidence, and that would be the responsible way to be making these decisions. Anecdotal decisions about the AP and IB test fees don't serve the school system well. And I've heard it for five years that the teachers who witnessed, students who were taking the tests, they didn't want to take the test, they're not prepared to take the test, they doodle in their booklet, they take naps, they just show up. And some of the scores show it when they're getting, you know, ones on their exams, and I don't think it's a reflection that the teachers didn't deliver the material. So I just, I worry a little bit about, first, we've wrestled with this, I know at least for the five years I've been on the board, which is, we worry, but I wish we would worry based on evidence, not on anecdotes. The other thing, and we've got two great school divisions right next door with similar demographics to us that could help us understand whether our worry is founded or unfounded. It's interesting to me that there's fear about unfairness for AP and IB test fees, but not the same exact fear of the students who will fall into the category of an athletic fee, which is actually higher than the test fee at $150. A third of our students not only play sports, but many of them play multiple sports. So I would hope that my colleagues who don't want to support AP and IB test fees do not support athletic fees because you're, if you're being consistent, your concern for your high-poverty schools and your high-needs families is going to be the same for sports as it is for AP and IB fees, if not classes, if not more. The other thing that, if you're looking at, you know, making decisions on how we demonstrate our commitment to our employees, Ms. Schultz, we have a wonderful relationship, but you're talking about, "We have a massive problem." Where's the evidence, "We have a massive problem"? I would support the evidence that we had 200 vacancies, but in the context of what? What is that, the percentage of vacancies to any other school division in the region? Did we compare our vacancy rates to Montgomery, to Loudon? I mean, we put out information, and I will just caution everybody, if we're not more careful and more intentional with our language, we are signaling to our employees that we're not compensating them competitively, that we aren't committed to them, that we are losing teachers at a hemorrhaging level. The businesses who look to locate here, the families who look to move here, are all hearing this. So we're hurting a vast portion of the community, and I think we had better be very careful and use our evidence to explain if it is truly Chicken Little. And I haven't seen the evidence yet. I think that we are anecdotally hearing concerns, and we have a responsibility to do what we are doing with our salary scale investment. But I will remind everybody that we keep talking about our teacher salary scale, and it relates to teacher salary. But, Ms. Huff, I was kind of hoping you were going to bring it up tonight, and maybe it's for Monday's conversation. But the most recent information we got is our infusion into our teacher salary scale just this current budget year has done a remarkable job of bringing us just about up to the market rate for total compensation of our teachers. And I'm not saying that means we don't stay committed to fixing the middle in our teacher salary scales, but I want us to have evidence-based opinions need to be based on the evidence. And so having those conversations, I'm a little worried that in our passions, we're not being as careful as and intentional as things we say, and I worry about the signal. So, and the final thing about equity and fairness, as given that 16 of our high schools, it's either 16 or 17 of them are AP, because I think we have eight IB, how is that equitable and fair to explain to all of our AP families, "We want to pay for up to six IB exams, but we only want to pay for, you know, in this case, for four for our APs"? I mean, I, so if the majority of this board wants to keep investing and paying for these fees, which everybody knows I'm not a fan of, but at least be very careful of what you signal to 2/3 of your high school families that you had a different set of rules and financial support to the IB students because there isn't a rationale and justification for that.
I have Ms. Strauss, but I do want to point out in the, you talk about factual, Montgomery County and Loudon both do have athletic fees. So they have, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I know they do, because we've talked about it. Does anybody know, does anybody recall? We can get that for you, but they, but they...
I'm pretty sure Loudon's is more expensive than Montgomery's. I think Montgomery's is $30 or $40.
Let's be really careful with the evidence again. It's a $30 or $40 fee, not a $100.
But, okay, I'm not going to go there, but there were some things, like you said, passions get in the way, and you and I can, well, evidence, I got that, I got that. And there's some things that were not anecdotal that you talked about with IB. They were not factual. So I will go to Ms. Strauss now.
Two things. One is, I do hope that my colleagues who are, you know, considering other proposals, I hope that... I hope that all of that actually comes out so that we are not surprised and so that we can ask the best questions possible, because clearly we're going to have to do, make decisions that none of us are going to want to make. So bottom line, nobody's, we're all going to have to give some in order to balance this in the end. So I'm not, I'm open to listening to what everybody has to say because I'm going to have to give up some things I wouldn't want to give up either. A couple of things, just in listening to what some of my colleagues have said, when we went to full-day Mondays, there was a cost to that because it's a staffing cost and triple T, et cetera. So regardless of what, what subject matter the teachers are teaching, there is simply a cost to that. So, and when we went to later High School Times, there was a cost to that in bus transportation and in buses that have already been delivered. And we obviously want to continue to maintain that. So as we are deliberating, we have to make sure that we understand some of our suggestions, how they could impact larger decisions that we have already made. And I, I'm quite certain we don't want to go back, we don't want to go back to half-day Mondays, we shouldn't want to go back on our later High School Times. And both of those have, have costs to them, so we wouldn't want to destabilize those. I am still very interested in how much we can give for salary increases in the teacher scale. And I do believe we have to figure out some way to give everybody a raise. We are well beyond the time when we can freeze pay. We can't do that anymore. So it is probably giving everybody a step and then seeing how far we can go with the teacher scale. So anyway, I do hope that everybody shares what you have in mind so that we really can negotiate and we're going to have to make compromises and we do that the best that we can. Thanks.
Thank you all. What I will do now, Eileen, are you taking notes on next steps with people asked, are we not? No, so we are going to do that follow-up. I know Ms. Michaels and Ms. Quinn, I know you're, you've, you've said this is, you, you have an understanding of what's needed and you can follow up with specific board members. And I, and I ask board members to follow up specifically with our budget staff as well for those things, which you said, to the board table if you have additional questions and if, and if you had something that you talked about offline. I, I do want to give us an opportunity because we do have a, a night before still and we need an opportunity to eat and, and, and do human sustenance things. Yes, and we, we need to eat, so we, we, we have to do that. Ms. Schultz, she had a question before. Let me just tell you what I, I'd like to do. I, I have a couple of things here on the list. There's, I, I know there's one, but I think that we have support for the rest, we, we won't, but I think there's four items that people have asked for. So I think we can do a hand show. It doesn't mean, if it doesn't come off the list tonight, it doesn't mean it might not come off the list in the future. I think the one thing, Janie, you made me think that if Dr. Lockard, if somebody hadn't already asked this, I'm trying to keep track of what everybody had asked. You know, we talk about the teacher scale, maybe elongating it additional year, you know, we, we started at four years, five, we started three years, right, a three-year, four years. I don't, I don't know if we can do costing out further than that, just to see what savings would be. Okay.
That's part of the, the tool that we provided, right?
Oh, yeah.
It is, it is there, yeah.
We can do that ourselves. I'm, I'm sorry. You know, Ms. Michael and-
I think we're going to resend it to everyone.
That's what I'm going to say, because it's been sent such a long time ago, it's difficult to find because as, as, as should be, we have a lot of advocates sending us emails and, and some of those things get more difficult to find. So if you can send that to all of us.
Sorry, and if I could add, when you resend that, updating the numbers at the top, I assume the total numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have two quick questions. Wait, Ms.? Oh, go ahead, go ahead. On the tool? Can you unlock the bottom part of it so that we can put our own notes in it and play with other numbers?
Sure. So if you want to add things to subtract from that deficit?
Yeah, sure. Great, thank you. Ms. Schultz, something quick, too?
Yeah, just real quickly, I know that part of the strings discussion or part of the, the complication with strings is the master calendar in a building and, and finding specials to fill in. I'm actually wondering if expanding strings down to kindergarten actually wouldn't save money, because then you would be, it would be universal in the building and you wouldn't be working with some grades that would be struggling with it. And it's the only musical endeavor that they actually make small instruments. Like you can't, you can't have a kindergartner, you know, easily play the piano, you can't have them play, have them do strings. So I, I'm actually wondering if we wouldn't save, if, if we haven't inverted our approach to this and that we wouldn't potentially, because not, not only is there appear to be, I don't know if it's unanimous, I, I certainly have never been supportive of, of cutting strings. And in fact, I just, I, I just wonder if we just don't go the other way and just expand it and ease the master calendaring at the, at the elementary level. Is there, like, are heads exploding over there?
Right. At this point in time, yes. I, I think we need to get our elementary principals into that conversation to better understand the schedule implications in the, in the primary grades. So I-
All right.
Nope, nope.
You'd one.
It was, no, well, it was one less thing. And the other thing that I have spent time talking with, because this is again teacher-focused of trying to figure out how to get more money in the pockets of teachers, we have 116 and a half specialists in instructional services, many of whom work centrally on developing and, and, and creating curriculum. Nothing against them, but you know, we're in the, we're, we've already seen the message go out for teachers to participate, as they do every year, in curriculum review, curriculum development. Now, these are the people who are in the classroom, they're the instructional leaders, that's where we need the strength. If, if we're committed to that, we could retract central development to some degree, central development of instruction, expand the summer program, have more teacher-led curriculum review and development. That would be putting more money in the pockets of teachers at a time where they're not earning money, and it would save us long-term in, in the cost of centrally developing it because those legacy costs are, are taken off the table. And, and then frankly, curriculum is developed by the people who are delivering it anyway and, and you get more peer-to-peer collaboration. So that's one of the many other things that I have that I, I think that we could take advantage of and could be another way to achieve our goal.
All right, thank you. So these are the four things that we all knew of. There were some other ones like FLEX and other things that were brought up, but we're not going to talk about that. But ones that we've been talking about have been band and strings, athletic fees, class sizes, and AP and IB test fees. Now, I, I am just saying to everyone who's watching and everyone who's up here, if a board member at this time says, I'm not, and, and what I want to ask you, this is, are you ready to take this off the list at this time? Now, if a board member is not ready to take it off the list at this time, it doesn't mean they are not supporting this idea, it means they are not ready to make a decision at this point in time. We have another, you know, a whole month perhaps, just before we get to the end of our budget. This is just to provide Dr. Lockard and his team with some guidance to say, you know what, we're going to, we're all going to have to work together to find monies to cover this, but at this point in time, we'd like to take this off. So with that, those directions in mind, who is ready tonight to say, you know what, I, I'm willing to find monies somewhere else to take band and strings off the list? All right. I, that's, I don't need to do a count, do I, Ms. Evans? All right. All right. At this point in time, who is ready to take athletic fees off the list and find the money somewhere else? All right, so we're not ready.
There is a question if possible reductions to the fees are, so that means-
Okay.
Just taking it off entirely?
We can, we can, we could, yes.
Okay. So this is entirely, regardless of the fee?
Yes, yes. And that can still be, be later on. This is like taking it off. So yes, we can discuss that further and thank you for bringing that point up.
Sorry, Ms. Darnett-Kopex, can you ask again on, like, are we leaving it? Like, I-
We're leaving it. It, it's staying on the list right now.
Then can you, can you ask from the perspective of reducing it?
Would people, would people like to find some monies but keep some of the, some of the, some of the monies coming from athletic fees and find some monies other, other where people, or people are willing to do that at this time?
Are people willing to look at a reduced athletic fee?
Right, okay, thank you.
What was the count on getting rid of it?
Four?
Four?
Four? Was it five? Let's do that one first, so people know, so Steve knows. Who at this time is willing to take athletic fees off the table and find the money somewhere else?
Entirely.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that, that would stay. Who is willing to take, who is willing to reduce athletic fees and-
Consider reducing.
Consider reducing the fees charged.
Ms. Darnett-Kopex, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I'm not sure, the point of this conversation right now is to give some direction to staff, right?
Right.
If we're going to vote and say, I'm willing to negotiate something different on that item, we could probably say that about a lot of these things.
You're right, I think you're right. I think you're right, Ms. Heinz. It's just somebody asked me and I'm just kind of going on the fly. This is, this is, this is, this is not scientific, this is just giving a sense of the board and it's not, it, it's not easy, I know that. All right, so we're just going to do it in total right now for the next, for all the items. So athletic fees is staying on the list. Who is willing at this time to take class, an increase, a .5 increase in class size off the list and find those monies somewhere else? One, two, three, four. That is not support and we will keep that. Who at this time is willing to take AP and IB fees as listed on the budget document, and I'm not going to read that, and take that off the list and find the money somewhere else?
Take it off.
Take it off the list.
So we find the money somewhere else.
So we find the money somewhere else. You wanted to revote, so?
Take the 1.1 out.
Yeah. So that was, please do that again, so I write, three. All right. That's four. We are, that's where our Dr. Lockard. And-
Ms. Darnett-Kopex, we need to keep in mind we have a forum scheduled that we're a little bit late.
And so I believe this, well, you can decide whether or not there's a forum, but I think the, the board needs to, Mr. Min, you want to say something about Monday's work session?
Yeah, I know, Monday evening work session, it is, I know that it is very important work session. I completely forgot to take a look at my calendar.
Boredy-bye.
When I made a commitment to another function. So I will not going to be here, but I will share some of my comments hopefully in writing with my colleagues before Monday.
Appreciate that, Mr. Min.
So could, perhaps, you know, we do have a lengthy closed session that is scheduled for after the meeting. Is there any desire to get started on that before, rather than do a forum?
We could do all these.
Yes, I would, I would prefer that.
Okay, can I, so, so, so we, are we suggesting cancel the forum and, and, okay. Well, we will do that. In that case, I will read the, I, I need to get a motion, I need to read this, so. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have the new one there, okay. The Board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to protect the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22-3711A 42 to discuss and consider the assignment, appointment, performance or resignation of specific employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia. Three, consider disciplinary matters concerning three students pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 2 of the Code of Virginia. Four, discuss and consider a candidate's employment as division superintendent pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia. Five, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 7 of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel issues and contract negotiations. And six, to discuss the award of a public contract for services involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of the contract where discussion of an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 29 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a, moved by Mrs. Schultz, seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, we're in closed session.